Good evening. This meeting of the Board of Education for August 7th, 2013 is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. All items that will be voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. It will also be archived on the board website. Usually it is streamed live on the PPS website, but it won't be this evening. Co-Chair Knowles is absent this evening. At this time, we're going to start with public comment. Ms. Houston, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Our first two speakers, Scott Bailey and Tanya March.
While those two folks are coming up, I'm going to read the instructions about public comment. Our responsibility as a board lay in actively listening and reflecting on the thoughts and opinions of others. The board won't respond to any comments or questions at this time, but we will follow up on various issues that are raised. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration when referring to board members, staff, and other presenters. It is -- we ask that you please refrain from criticizing individual staff members by name during public comment. You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of testimony, a green light will appear on that little box in front of you, and when you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will appear, and then when your time's done, a red light will appear, and at that time, we ask that you respectfully wrap up your comments. Thank you very much for your input and coming to join us this evening. We look forward to your cooperation, and you can start any time.
My name is Tanya March, M-A-R-C, like the month, and I have two children at Metropolitan Learning Center, and I have been the vice president of the PTSA for five years. I'm going into my sixth year of that position. I think it's -- I love MLC school. I just want to start with that, too. I think it's time to put out the welcome mat to all at MLC school. We have a number of barriers to economic inclusion at the school which have increasingly concerned me. One of them is a transportation barrier. We lost the 17 bus route. That has decreased the access to our school. We are not served by the yellow school bus. I went to many TRIMET meetings attempting to salvage that bus line. The current bus system does not allow proper access for our students to the school. That becomes a barrier to economic inclusion for students who do not have parents with cars to get them to our school. I am seeing that be a problem in our school. Our application process is also a barrier to economic inclusion. I keep hearing about how it is barriers to other types of inclusion. I agree with that as well. And the transparency in that process. We've changed from one untransparent system to a second lacking transparent system, and I assume the changes to Site Council will allow me to have some transparency into how that application process is handled. Number three is the lack of breakfast in our school. I have brought this to numerous people. I have support from our principal to have breakfast served. Our breakfast is served at a snack time of 10:30 a.m., and then our lunch is served at 11:30. That creates a fast famine-obesity cycle for our underserved children. It also is saying, "Don't come to our school. We are not going to feed you breakfast," when your neighborhood school will. It was because we didn't have the numbers of children, but it also is making it so we are inviting less of those children. I know that I've been heard, and I've been told that we are going to have carts possibly serving breakfast. I think that is going to be disruptive to the classroom environment. I think we need to have breakfast served before school. That way, we have a safe place for children to gather before the school day, especially because we don't have a bus system and kids are coming on public transportation with very erratic schedules to meet the entrance to our school building. I saw us lose the SUNS school. That was another budget cut. We lost our swimming pool. We lost the grass at Cooch Park. Cooch Park is Portland Public School property. That's become a dog park. We have very little outdoor places. Our playground has been on the demolition requested now through Portland Parks and Ark for two years. It is considered unsafe, and I've slowly watched that playground be taken apart and certain elements of it removed. I admire the parents who came last month to talk about the spirit of alternative education. I also admire Ms. McCary for calling out our racial inequities. But I'm witnessing dropping free and reduced school lunch numbers, and I'm also witnessing a drop in IEP population numbers. I'm also seeing an increase in the fifth year of high school. I find these things to all be quite alarming. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. March.
Our next speakers are Jeff Longwill and Martin Nguyen.
My name is Jeff Longueuil.
My name is Martin Huen. First name is M-A-R-T-I-N, last name H-E-Y-N-H.
Okay. I just wanted to come here to express my support for Vietnamese language immersion program. Given that the number of families in Portland that speak Vietnamese is so large comparatively speaking, I think it makes sense to me that that would be a language to seriously look at as to have such a program. I think having that program would give the opportunity for the younger members of those families to get a better grasp of their history and their community, where they came from, and to perhaps communicate better with the older members of that community that do speak that language. And it would give the opportunity for people that don't speak that language to learn about our neighbors, because it's a very large community and a very strong part of the Portland area. So I think that's what I really have to say on that, but I urge the program. Thank you.
Thank you. And I came here to just follow his idea. As I am parent of the tweet case.
I grew up from Portland, and I think Vietnamese language is very helpful for the kids to do a language in this community. So while we are the parents, we are their sides, so we can help them to be -- continue the Vietnamese language. So if we don't do that right now, so until 10 or 30 years later, so that's too late for if we, you know, we cannot support for them. So that's mean they will discontinue their own languages. So that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Great. Thank you both.
Our last two speakers, Jim Giang and Lynn Trong.
My name is Jim Giang. I'm just here to urge you to try and implement a program for Vietnamese language immersion. I think it's a large community here of Vietnamese, and I know that at Richmond, there's an immersion program for Japanese, and they have a much smaller community here in Portland. I think it's important culturally for the Vietnamese that are here to be able to stay in touch with their own culture. It's probably there are going to, in the future, will be economic benefits probably for the community, because Vietnam is an emerging economy, and there's a -- there'll probably be some utility in people here being familiar with that culture. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Superintendent and all of you. My name is Michelle Tran. I am 11 years old. I am happy to come here today to speak with you, to open the Vietnamese English classes for the Vietnamese kids around the Portland area. The Vietnamese community of Oregon suggested me to speak with you about my ideas. I want to share mine with you. To be honest first, I don't like speaking Vietnamese or learning Vietnamese. Who wants to learn it anyways? But when it comes to do homework, there's trouble. When I need help on my homework, I don't know what to ask my parents, because they don't speak English. My parents don't know enough English to help me on my homework, and I don't know that much Vietnamese to explain the problem to them. But then I realized that Vietnamese is my native language, and so is many other Vietnamese kids, too. So I need to learn Vietnamese, and so is many others. Vietnamese English classes will help me to understand more of the concepts and information taught in school. I want my little brothers and sisters to learn the Vietnamese language very well to communicate with the Vietnamese people, especially my parents and to my relatives. When I graduate from high school, I will speak fluently two languages, Vietnamese and English. It will help me have a better future in studying in college and in working. When I grow up, I wish to go to Vietnam to help heal and communicate with the sick and poor people who needs help. When I'm older and not living with my parents, I want to visit my parents often, and of course, speak to them in Vietnamese, so they understand me. In conclusion, I would like you to open the Vietnamese English classes for me to learn, for my brothers and sisters, and for many other Vietnamese kids to learn Vietnamese and English together, so I can fulfill my dreams and my wishes. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming. Moving on to our next item of the agenda, I'm not sure that all the members for the Bond Accountability Committee are -- that are going to present are here. Is that true? Do we have enough of them to move? See Mr. March, Mr. Peterson? Okay. You can -- why don't you come on up? So this evening, we're going to hear a report from the Bond Accountability Committee, a group of professionals that are charged to support the board in overseeing the bond program that was passed by voters last year. And tonight, we have Steve March and Tom Peterson with us, and I don't know if Louis Fontenot is going to join us, but he might join us a little later.
Might join us in a little bit. Chair, school board members, for the record, my name is Steve March, a member of the Bond Accountability Committee, and with me is Tom Peterson. You have the written report before you, so I'm not going to read it verbatim. I just -- we'll just hit a few of the highlights. As you know, the construction's fully underway on the summer projects. Those appear to be on time, on schedule, and within the budget parameters, so that's good news. Other, the EdSpecs work is being done. We've broken up into sort of two-member teams to kind of focus on various parts. I've been focusing on the summer work. Tom, how about you?
Yeah, and I'm on the Franklin and Roosevelt team. In fact, I just attended the Design Advisory meeting last night at Franklin for the first one. And then we also have a group focused on the Fabian project as well. So there's kind of, we've broken up into four teams of two. There's a lot of activity going on right now, and it was hard for us to stay on top of it. We only meet quarterly, so we kind of decided this is a good way for us to stay plugged in without trying to expect every one of the Bond Committee members to be involved in all the goings on. But so far, we're off to a good start. The meeting last night was very good, I thought, so.
Also, on the report, I know on the previous report, we talked about the level of financial reporting, and that's improved greatly. We're seeing where changes are made, both positives, pluses and minuses added to the schedule or removed from the schedule. So that's a real good improvement. It helps us better understand the projects and the complexities of what's happening in the field, so that's been very, very good. I think probably the one red flag area, or not red flag, yellow flag area, would be around the equity issue. We had some very aspirational high targets at minority and women businesses participation. That's coming in lower than the -- than what you were hoping for, but that's something that as the entire rollout of all the projects goes on, you can hope to keep working on. And then, so finally, I think that mostly the other issue that was presented to us at our last meeting was the CMGC, or Construction Manager General Contractor, draft findings. The Bond Accountability Committee concurred with those findings. I think all of us who have familiarity with the CMGC process finds that to be a more efficient and effective way of doing projects of this type in a rapid and efficient manner. So I think probably the details for the board and for the district is to make sure that the contracts that you do sign and the parameters put forth in your request for proposals or qualifications lay out what your expectations are. That's the key. And then going forward, working closely with whoever wins those bids. With that, I think we're open to questions.
Thank you. Director Regan, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I know you've been part of the Design Advisor Group at Roosevelt. Do you have any feedback or any thoughts about how that's going? I don't know if you've been -- how many times I've met?
It's pretty early in the stage. We met twice, and it was really the same meeting, because a lot of people couldn't make it to the first one due to the summer months. So it's really just been a preliminary meeting so far. We have another one coming up. The two groups, the Franklin and Roosevelt teams, though, have been invited to go visit some schools in Seattle, which is going to be really great. And I know many of us have done some of those tours already, but if any board members can participate in those, it's really well worth it.
Yeah, and I got to see Tom join us at the Franklin Design Advisor Group, and it also is moving along really, really well, as people starting to envision what this would look like, also being part of that tour up to Seattle. But also beginning, really waiting for this EdSpecs piece to come out, because that's going to kind of define what core programming looks and what a main facility in PPS would look like before we can kind of begin to put space and time to those pieces, so.
And Chair, also, as the architects are selected and brought on board, I think the work will speed up very quickly.
Right.
So I just have a question, just to remind us in the public about how the EdSpecs work and when that's going to be rolling out and how folks can get involved in that. I don't know if that's for you or more for staff.
Well, I think it's going on concurrent with the Design Advisory Groups. I don't know the specifics, but I think the schedule has been programmed so that the conclusions that they come to, recommendations they come to, will then be incorporated into the Design Advisory Groups, and they will kind of carry it forward. So right now, I think it's tracking. Jim's probably better positioned to say, but my recollection schedule is on board.
It's coming up in an upcoming board meeting. You're going to hear from that on the EdSpecs.
Okay, that's great. And I should preface what my commoner question was, thanking you for your service. We really appreciate it, having your expertise and just providing that accountability for us. And just to confirm, all the -- these reports and the materials are all up on our website for folks to see.
Yes, correct.
So if the public wants to go, and they'll just search under the bond, and then they'll see, you know, both who's on the committee and all that everything, and of course, the meetings are public as well. So just really appreciate that.
They do public notices of all our meetings, and so public -- we've had public at some of the meetings.
Great, that's great. Thank you so much.
First of all, thank you. I really appreciate this update. I was wondering, since we aren't meeting our equity goals, is there a method we're applying to the next few projects to try and meet that goal?
Well, of course, that's a management decision, not the Bond Accountability's decision, but it's something that they're tracking closely, and I know that, let's see, the one of the things, so let me double check here, oops. The aspirational goal was 18 percent. The sort of the current level is 14 percent, but when all of the builders' contracts are included, it's probably going to lower more. The larger the firms, the less likely they are to be minority and a woman-owned firm.
I might add, from my own experience, I happen to manage the construction department for the Port of Portland, so we have a lot of experience with small business. And when you're trying to do aspirational goals, it's tough, because you don't have -- you probably don't have a disparity study and the other things that you need to really set hard goals. But I will add that with the CMGC approach, you get much better participation, because the nature of the contract lends itself, and you can sit down and work with your contractors. So I would agree that on the projects where it's just a competitively hard-bid project, you're going to have a tougher time trying to meet those goals. But with the CMGC, you'll have a tremendous opportunity to really make some real progress there, so. So that would be my prediction, and then over time, as the school district gets more experience, and they'll be able to set their own goals, and you'll probably see better participation over time.
Thank you.
Other question?
Great. Well, thank you both for being here, and really, thank you for your service. We know it's hours and hours of additional time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad that we could get you in on time and out on time.
In on button.
Just want to remind folks that they're doing this for free. It's a volunteer position. Next, we're going to move on to an update about the arts tax that's been in the news for the past week. Superintendent Smith, can you introduce this item?
I will, and I'll ask our Deputy Chief Financial Officer, David Wine, and Senior Policy Advisor, John Isaacs, to come on up and give us an update on our implementation of the good news.
Thank you, Co-Chair Ballale, board members. Superintendent Smith, I'm David Wine. We're particularly happy to come to you tonight with good news on the city arts income tax, since that's a change in the tenor of our reports to you. As you mostly all know, I'm sure, the tax was passed in November. There are four primary uses for the funds under this tax, the first of which is to fund teachers in schools within the city of Portland, serving students in grades K through 5, and we get funding at the rate of one teacher for every 500 students. In our budget, we estimated that that would be about 45 to 46 teachers and $4.5 million. As we were working on the budget, the city indicated some uncertainty about their ability to pass through those funds because of legal challenges. There's a lawsuit at the district court level and a lawsuit in tax court. We worked with the city and the other school districts to put a guarantee in place from them, and we scaled back staffing within the budget process to about $3 million, which translated into .5 of a teacher in each of our schools, serving kids in grades K through 5. Well, the good news is that in both of those court cases, the lawsuits have been heard in the first-level courts, though in both cases, they found for the city. And the city has now told us that they will distribute all of the money collected and due to schools, and as effectively, they are assuming any risk of overturns on appeal. So the contingent sort of backup arrangement that you reinforced as part of the budget process is off the table, and we don't need to worry about that. At the same time, the city is reviewing the structure of the tax and considering a number of different ways of doing this going forward. So that's good news for Portland Public Schools and for the other school districts in the city. So we will be restoring our original plan for the city arts tax funding and staffing, where we were allocating teachers based on that 500-to-1 ratio, rounded up or down to the nearest .5 FTE. We'll be communicating details to schools by the end of this week. Some schools will actually see an addition, some of the largest schools will see an addition of 1 FTE, some will see an addition of .5 FTE, and some of the smaller schools, who would only have gotten .5, will see no change. We have a couple of details still to be resolved. There are a small number of cases where we made special accommodations for the hardship caused by the reduction, and as soon as we figure that out, we will be communicating the new staffing levels to schools. The good news is that even at that reduced .5 across-the-board level, we were on track to have more arts teachers in those schools in this coming year than we had last year. This will add somewhere between 15 and 18 additional teachers in that art tax funding, and once we've got all of those staffing decisions made, we will be reporting back to you with the specific data for what 1314 looks like and how that compares to 2012-13. We are, of course, very grateful to the mayor and to his staff and all the city council for working with us and the other city school districts, and as I said, we will be getting this information out to schools and having them staff up as soon as we can. Thank you.
And you may not be able to, and thank you very much. This is fantastic news, obviously. Do you know, do you know how they're doing in terms of collection? And the second part of that is anything, is that collection dependent on, or are hiring new teachers dependent on collection?
We know enough to know that they have collected enough money, that they will have enough, they have enough money collected to take care of the teacher-funding part of the tax.
Okay, great.
So we're in good shape.
So teachers first, then?
The other uses.
Excellent.
Wait in line. They have enough, they've collected enough money to meet their obligations as far as teachers are concerned.
That's fantastic. That's a great priority.
I recall in the measure that I think that the Regional Arts and Culture Committee was going to be able to have two staff people who would essentially serve as coordinators or facilitators of the arts organizations working with schools. And do you have any sense of what the priority is on those two positions compared to how else the money might be used? Because I know that one of the things that we did in our resolution accepting this, as we said we want to have a kind of a K-12 continuum, we want to be thinking through that already. So do you have any sense of that yet?
I don't. I don't think we do. The last information I remember us getting from the city about their collections, I'm not sure how that translates into the other funding uses, and to be perfectly frank with you, I can't remember which order those other ones come in. But we will follow up and find out some more about that now that we've got the information that we do and the news about where we are. So we'll check up on that.
That'd be great.
Wonderful news, of course. Now, let me understand the process of this. We voted in the budget, we didn't, I wasn't here, but they voted in the budget to do this if we didn't have this and to do that. I mean, they had all the options set out in the budget vote?
Not exactly. So the budget actually includes a forecast of $4.5 million of revenue, so what we're actually going to get. And when we talked about school staffing, we said that at that point, our plan was to scale down the staffing to the .5 FTE. We have capacity within the budget and appropriated dollars to staff up to the higher level. What we're letting you know now is that based on the fact that we're likely to get all of the revenue now and not less of it, we're able to go ahead and staff schools at that originally-proposed level rather than at the scaled-back level.
But that was all passed during the budget hearings?
I'm not sure.
And the vote, and the vote on the budget? In other words, we laid out those options in the budget itself? If this happened, this didn't happen, and so forth? Those were all laid out in the budget?
We talked about what our current plan was, but we also had capacity to take it to the higher level. So the budget vote gave us the ability to do what we're doing now, not just what we were proposing to do at the time.
So it was all laid out in the budget vote?
We left ourselves the capacity to go back up to this level like we're doing.
And that was all written up and so forth?
That was part of the, yeah, part of the budget.
Part of everything, okay. Thank you very much.
I have a question more on the happy part of hiring the folks. Do we have any sense from HR in terms of just are there folks out there who are qualified and available and what just what the, since this is an unusual situation for us to actually be going out and hiring some arts teachers?
Right. So risky as it is for me to speak to HR, we had a conversation earlier in the week as we were figuring out what this might look like. We had one of the senior staffing people from HR at the table, and she was happy at this opportunity for kids in Portland schools and did not, at that point, express reservations about our ability to find teachers.
So it's going out, and we're just going to?
Yep. Yeah, and now, and it could be that in some cases, we have teachers who are, you know, .5 and have the ability to step up. It's also true, frankly, that we know that in some cases, we have teachers who, under the current arrangement, are .5 in one school and .5 in another. In those school, in those situations, there'll be a variety of things to sort of figure out.
Right.
But at this point, we're, I think, cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to find teachers.
That's fantastic. And just to echo Director Regan's comment about the, since we haven't had an arts teacher on special assignment or overall, you know, guidance for a number of years, if there's any way we can get that as part of this, so we can start moving toward that, that would be fantastic. This is obviously great news, so thanks so much.
Director Beal? Oh, I forgot this question, sorry. When we say arts, are we talking art? Are we talking music? Are we talking graphic? Are we talking graphic arts? What are we talking in this context?
Right. Director Buell, so in this context, it's a certified teacher, art, music, dance, or drama?
And the decision is being made?
At individual schools.
At individual schools.
As to which they choose or which combination of things they choose.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can I add on to that? Which is part of the reason that I asked the question I did about the K-12 continuum, because if we, at some point, want to have really, really strong band programs in our high schools, we need to have music. And at the same time, I think there's a lot of interest for, you know, strong dance programs. And so the question is, how is all of that going to be coordinated? And if we don't have a teacher on special assignment or someone specifically looking at that, you know, on a cluster basis, maybe a high school cluster basis, I'm just kind of curious how that's going to work. I get that for this first year, we may just have the schools decide, but it seems like we want to be more intentional perhaps.
So, and I think we're building capacity over time. So I know this year, as we were anticipating the arts tax, numbers of the regional administrators and principals had those conversations within their cluster, just looking at where their strength already was, how do they build on it? How are they trying to start building feeder patterns? And there are different strengths in different clusters. And we don't have the, we didn't add arts TOSSAs to our district and part of what, nor did other districts, and that was part of the idea of a shared TOSSAs across the districts to try and build some of the feeder pattern capacity over time. But I imagine, like, if in fact we are in budget, but build-back mode over time, this is some of the capacity we would want to build. It was the more central support for, and coordination.
Right. And I know we need to move on, but just, I mean, also, because this is also in the context of where, the way it worked out in the budget, because this was sort of a standalone piece, but we also had cuts in other some schools. So we had some situations where folks were getting an art teacher but having to lose their librarian, for example.
They had to cut other electives and have art be their elective.
Right. So there's still, obviously, the larger conversation about the reinvestment and building back across the board.
Yeah. But this is a huge, like, beginning and, it's huge, yes.
I just want to clarify a couple of quick things. I believe that you said that moving forward, if for some reason a higher court overturns a lower court's ruling, the city has assumed the risk.
That is what I said, and we have confirmed that with the city.
Thank you. Because I, I'll go ahead.
Well, I think one thing, John Isaac, senior policy advisor, so for this one year, and the one thing everyone should continue to pay attention to and track is that the city council is currently considering a number of options for changing the tax. So one of the factors that went into them assuming all of the risk this year is that there's, they, while they don't have consensus about what the change is going to be, there's pretty strong consensus that there will be changes. And so the legal actions that were filed this year won't apply to any future tax because it's going to be different. So that's, that was the key thing that went into that. And that's something we're going to need to track as the council considers, you know, making it different than it is now.
I also want to give my colleagues credit that as we began to look at the original MOU, an intergovernmental agreement about this, we were pretty particular about what it contained in making sure, for example, to your point, Director Morgan, Morton, Morgan, that arts teachers were funded first and then the additional arts folks. And I just want to thank you all for being aware that, again, there was this tension, we were trying to move it ahead so we could move forward, but still trying to be diligent in making sure that what we thought we were assigning was what we were actually agreeing to. And then just one last question is, can you, can somebody talk, I don't know if either you two are, but how are we communicating this with, I know we're going to be communicating with principals, but are we supporting the principals in communicating this to parents and what to expect and how this is going to roll out?
Yeah, that, once we've figured out what the staffing looks like, we will be working with principals to figure out how to have that conversation with their larger community. Thanks. Anything else?
Great. Thank you both very much.
Great news. That's great.
Awesome. We're going to move on to our business agenda. Ms. Houston, are there any changes to the business agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
If you will look at Resolution 4784 on page three of the business agenda, for the very first item listed in the table, the Jefferson High School track, where it says contractor to be determined, we now know the contractor is Anderson Construction, and the contract value is $267,167.
Thank you. Did everybody get that?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
To you, Ebelisle.
Yes.
I wonder if before we go to the business agenda and get into that, I can ask a question of the chairperson.
Regarding an item on the agenda?
Huh?
Regarding an item on the agenda or the?
Regarding an item that's not on the agenda.
Okay, can we save that until after the business agenda?
You want to do that after?
Sure.
Okay.
So do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda as amended?
Some. Second.
Director Regan moves, Director Atkins moves to adopt the business agenda. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment for the business agenda?
No.
Is there any board discussion on the business agenda? Director Buell?
I have several questions.
Okay.
I guess, tracking them towards the superintendent, they're starting down on the new contracts. Provide tutoring services in reading and math to De La Salle Catholic High School. We, that is, those tutoring services have to do with, is that the tutoring services that were from the AYP stuff? Or is this something else?
So this is, the district acts as the local education agency that flows federal dollars through to our private programs that are within our area. So these are dollars that are allocated for those private schools to provide tutoring services.
Can I just double-check that that, that contract is in a report? It's not part of the business agenda or part of our action?
This is a report to the board, correct?
It's a report. So this isn't the time to ask questions about the reports, it'd be a time to ask?
So those will come back on the business agenda?
No, those are within the superintendent's authority to do without our approval, and so she reports regularly.
She's reporting this, but you can't ask questions on the report?
Not when we're adopting the business agenda.
Can we do it at the, towards the end of the meeting?
You're welcome to sit, superintendent, or have a discussion with her about that.
But you want, allow us to do it publicly in the meeting?
It's, again, we can talk about things you want to add on to the agenda at the end of the agenda, but this isn't the place to do it.
Okay.
Any other questions about the business agenda?
Yes. Once I find it. 4784.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Go to the Miller-Nash.
Pan 4785.
Yeah, starting with the Miller-Nash, we're going to give them 800, not to exceed $800,000. What percentage of our, say, like, in 1985, what percentage of our legal stuff was in-house, and what percentage is in-house now? This seems like a pretty large amount, since we have a full-time attorney and we're actually adding legal services in the district. Have we increased or decreased? I've had people tell me we've decreased in a tremendous amount.
So to be clear, you're asking for a comparison rate to the year of 1985, Director Buell?
Well, I was, I was asking that 85 didn't have, I mean, have we decreased or increased? Leave it at that, we can do that.
Okay.
Is it decreased or increased?
As a percentage?
In-house.
As a percentage of our overall budget of?
No.
Our general fund budget?
As our legal, legal budget. The amount of budget that deals with our legal services.
I'm not sure.
You don't understand that maybe, but I'm sure the superintendent.
No, I understand the question. I understand the question.
It's just whether or not we're ready to answer.
We're not prepared to answer that, the comparison to 1985 to this evening, but we can get you something.
I'd like, I'd like to have that segregated out, if you would, calling for a division of the, a division on that.
So in-house versus what's contracted out?
Right, that's what I'd like to know. And how that's changed over the last few years. It's, I've talked to people that says it's changed immensely in the direction that we do way less in-house, and huge amounts go out to Miller-Nash that didn't, that we used to do in-house. That's what I'd like to know, and?
We're really looking at?
You read, you read Robert Schule's orders, you know that a division takes four votes. Okay.
So, all right.
That's the first thing? So that's a motion.
Are you making a motion?
Right.
To?
Divide that out, so I can vote no on that.
Oh, okay.
So you're taking a motion to remove the Miller-Nash contract?
Vote on it separately.
Right, to remove it from Resolution 4784.
And make it its own resolution.
And to bring it as its own resolution.
Right.
So that you can vote on that separately.
Yes.
Do I have a second to amend the business, or, excuse me, Resolution 4784, as Director Buell has mentioned, which is to remove the Miller-Nash contract into its separate resolution?
Sure, I mean, I would say?
It's just a consideration.
Okay. Director Buell motions, Director Regan seconds. So we will first to vote on whether or not the motion to remove that passes.
Okay.
So all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Please, all those opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
So I'm going to need hands. I think I have, Director?
This was a division vote?
Right.
I voted yes on the division.
So it passes, the motion to remove the Miller-Nash contract into its own resolution passes four to two, with student representative voting?
Yes.
Yes. So now we will consider Resolution 4784 with the Miller-Nash contract removed. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of approving Resolution 4784 with the Miller-Nash contract removed, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying no. All those abstaining, please indicate so. The business agenda is approved by, excuse me, no, the business agenda is not approved yet. Resolution 4784 is approved as amended, with Miller-Nash contract being removed, by a vote of six to zero, with student representative Davidson voting?
Yes.
Yes. I'm going to move on before Director Buell, before we get to the, its own resolution, to actual Resolution 4785, which was also part of the business agenda, which I probably should have just done with the other resolution, because that was the original motion. But Resolution 4785, are there, as part of the business agenda, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, there's a question?
Pretty fast. On the Rand Corporation, this is, this is amending, we have a contract with the Rand Corporation studying the language immersion.
We're part of a study that the Rand Corporation is conducting about the effectiveness of dual-language immersion programs, and we're a district that has, as a public school district, substantial dual-language immersion programs. So they actually, it's a revenue contract for them to include our dual-language immersion schools in their study.
What's a revenue contract?
Meaning they pay us.
So we're?
We are collecting dollars in order to be a participant, and it's a three-year study. So it's an overtime kind of study.
Thank you.
Overtime study, that's what the dollars pay for, is that what you're?
It's the, it's a study over three years. So we, meaning we don't have?
What do the dollars pay? What do we, what do we do with the dollars?
They're paying us to actually provide them with data, so.
Good thing to find out.
If there's no other discussion about Resolution 4785, seeing none, all those in favor of approving Resolution 4785, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution 4785 passes by a vote of six to zero, with student representative Davidson voting?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Again, I'm going to move on to Resolution 4786 before we add a new resolution for Director Buell's. So we will move on to, again, this was part of the business agenda, but we're just pulling them all apart. So moving on to Resolution 4786, do I have a motion and a second to approve?
Some.
Director Atkins moves to approve Resolution 4786. Is there a second?
Second.
Director Morton seconds Resolution 4786 adoption. Is there any board discussion? Director Buell?
Peter Hamilton, who was an ex, was an ex-principal in our district, which kind of creates a little bit of a problem, but not really a major one. Having a retired principal to deal with this probably isn't too bad, it's a good spot. But there's some other things that come into play here. And one, I asked one question in the last two weeks, couldn't get an answer out of it. One question was all I asked for two weeks for the administration, couldn't get it, and I just asked, had Peter Hamilton done contracting work for us in the past? No one will tell me, evidently. And I also wanted to know, does that mean he's going to do contracting work for us maybe in the future? If that's the case, there's no way that he can be an unbiased ombudsman. This is, even if he's George Washington and Abraham Lincoln rolled into one, you know, he walked 10 miles to get, take the apple back to the library or something. There, it's just the appearance of a bias is way too strong if that's the case. There's no one wants to tell me, I have to act that that's the case, since other people said that that was the case. So I don't, I don't see any way I could possibly vote for this particular resolution as long as it's set up the way it is. I think you have to, we have to go back and start over. Now, I don't know if everybody else can vote for it, probably, maybe you can vote for unbiased ombuds people.
Other discussion?
So I actually would like to provide an answer to that question, which is, yes, he has provided contracting services in the past and would in the future. And we have numbers of people who have provided investigative, do investigation kinds of services for us of a number of different kinds of investigation when requested. And some of it is like an advantage for us of having somebody who's retired from our system is understanding what they're seeing. So would you acknowledge? The other is familiarity with what an, what an investigation entails and professionalism around how you conduct one, which Peter is familiar with. So like, it's very specific who we would go to to ask for somebody to conduct an investigation. And once we have those people, we would continue to use them. So, but he's one of a number of people that we use for such services.
So he's not serving as an ombudsman, is Director?
No.
It's kind of a word that came up in his.
He's doing an investigation. And it's a formal process that's got pretty formal, you know, structure about how you would conduct it and what kind of a report we expect as a result of it. But yes, we would continue to contract, which is really the question.
Director Buell?
But he is writing up the report. He might, you know, ombudsman is a word that I believe came out of his report. So I don't know exactly, or you call him an arbitrator, or whatever you want to call him. He's writing up the report.
Correct.
And how's he going to give, theoretically, like I say, he could, Peter Hamilton is a, I'm sure, is a wonderful man. I don't know. It's just the appearance of the bias. This has gone out through the Ainsworth neighborhood, too, saying, wait, this isn't right. This guy's going to be doing contracting work? Is that contracting work down the line going to be affected by the fact that he is, gives, if he came out totally against the district, would he then get more contracts? It just, it just doesn't look right, and it's an important issue, and it needs to be, needs to be above, it needs to just be really solid and honest.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just had a comment. I mean, I think one of the things I appreciated about Mr. Hamilton's report was that he pointed out where the district clearly needs to continue to follow up and work on this issue, both, I mean, we're seeing this at a number of schools where there's some really serious concerns and controversies in the parent community. So I think I appreciate that a great deal. So I'm in support of this resolution.
I mean, I, I think you're, you're bringing up a character point, and I'm not sure that's an entirely fair point to be making. Let me finish, please. The, I mean, similarly, would you, if you've used an auditor in the past, if you've paid them for their auditing services, would you then not use them again because perhaps they would get future business from us? We partner with organizations that, that do their business correctly, that are vetted appropriately, that know the district, and Mr. Hamilton is one of those people. The, I think, I, I'm concerned about sort of the, you make a fair point about appearance, but I'm also not prepared, based on zero evidence, to support that appearance, to kind of assassinate his character, which I think is kind of what you're doing.
It's going to get tricky. We might have to have a discussion about how hard we want to work on Robert's rules. I'll just remind folks to be careful about speaking directly to each other and personalizing it. This is really about the issue, and try to keep it focused about the issues, Director Buell?
I was as clear as I could possibly be, as kind as I could possibly be in saying that it has nothing, my point has nothing to do with the character of the man. I don't even know the man. I'm saying, the point has to do with, I don't care if we put Abraham Lincoln in to make that decision, it still looks bad the way that it comes out. And it's not, has he done similar types of things in the past? Worked for us? What difference would it make? It's still, it's still a bad situation, and-
A question for superintendent, what are other districts do in this regard?
You know, I can't speak to that specifically, but I'm sure similar in that you end up seeking the services of people who can provide, as a disinterested party, an investigation of something that you're looking for an investigation into.
Right, I mean, because Steve, if you follow your, I mean, it's a good question to raise, so I appreciate you for doing that, and-
I didn't really raise it, though.
If you follow it through, then we would never be able to hire the same person twice.
On, on any investigation?
Yeah, and that doesn't seem to be necessarily where we wanna go.
That's not the same conclusion, Tom, that I come to, it's not, it's, the question is that the, it's not that this is an investigator, this is not his job to come in and investigate this stuff. I mean, we hired him to do that, but he works in other stuff. This is an unbiased situation where this is a complaint procedure. How many have we had complaint procedures like this in the last three years that we've hired somebody in, and it's gotten all the way to the school board?
Not, not that many, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably a very small number. This just looks bad, and it's kind of become explosive, and I'm just, I don't like looking bad as a district.
Okay. So, I heard a call to the question. So, at this point, if there's no other discussion? Do I have a motion to, I'm, I'm sorry, we have a motion, that's why we're talking about it. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 4786, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
Those that are abstaining? Resolution 4786 passes by a vote of five to one with student representative Davidson voting-
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Sure, why?
So, it, it would be nice at some point in time, Grill, just to find out what other districts are doing, and kind of, let's address the issue from a more information-
So the question specifically, how do other districts conduct investigations?
Yeah, and deal with the perceived conflict of interest.
Yep, can follow up on that?
Yeah.
We're now gonna move to a new resolution, and the resolution, I'm going to number 4787. And the resolution is to approve the Miller-Nash LLP contract for a not-to-exceed amount of $800,000, legal services contract LS 60015, as previously removed from Resolution 4784. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt?
So moved.
Director Regan moves.
Second, so you're saying, you said remove, but you're gonna remove and then approve?
I removed it, I'm sorry, I removed, I just referred to as it was written in Resolution 4784, but it is now its own resolution of 4787, yeah.
Yeah.
Director Atkins seconds, is there any board discussion about it? Further board discussion about it? No further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
Anybody abstaining? Vote, wow, I'm doing a lot of math in my head, I'm gonna have to get used to this. Resolution passes by a vote of five to one, thank goodness they're not big numbers, with student representative Davidson voting-
Yes.
Yes, thank you. That moves us through our current agenda. If there are no objections, I know Director Buell has a couple of items that he would like to move, are there no objections to alter our policy this evening? Seeing no objections, Director Buell, I think you had something?
I, I just was, I had three motions that I wanted to, would like to make, and they were all short motions. I sent them to the leadership team as I asked. I just think that it's important that we do things in a more transparent way than we have, for instance.
Director Buell, if you have a motion, please make it. This would be the time to do it.
Okay, I moved that we, that I have it written down, why don't I pass it out?
Great, thank you, that's actually preferred.
There's a motion on changing the meeting date. Whereas the superintendent wishes to attend Monday teacher meetings in the late afternoon, and whereas the student director for the Portland Public School School Board has conflicting dates with Wednesday meetings, and whereas 5:00 PM meetings can conflict with work schedules for many people, including some board members, whereas it has been the past practice to not hold school board meetings which conflict with Portland Association of Teacher Meetings, which are on Wednesday, be it therefore resolved that regular meetings of the school board be held on Tuesdays at 6:00 PM unless changed for reasons of conflict by the chairperson of the board.
Thank you, now technically, we've suspended our rules for these motions, because otherwise this motion would be out of order. So that being said, Director Buell, just to be clear, that not only are these submitted in advance, but then they are placed on agendas as need be, not submitted on Friday, the two appear the next week without an agenda-setting meeting, just so you're clear on that, that process. I know that we're all still figuring this out.
Does that mean they'll get on the agenda?
It means that they'll be considered for the agenda at the appropriate time. So that being said, Director Buell has made a motion that the regular meetings of the school board be held on Tuesdays at 6:00 PM unless changed for reasons of conflict by the chairperson of the board, is there a second?
I would second it.
Okay, Director Regan seconds?
I'm also perfectly happy to have this at a later date, too.
Well, now we're in board discussion, and we'll take a vote on it. There was gonna be a discussion about it, but we can have it now. Or we can table it, or we can vote no and have a discussion again. Director Curler?
I believe that this is a little ahead of the game, I mean, the, the topic, it is on the table, and it's getting discussed with people's schedules, so, is that right?
That is correct.
Yeah. So I've moved to table it and come back with, when we'll figure out a date that works. I do wanna be clear that having Andrew at the tables is a high priority for the district.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I've also indicated to leadership that Wednesday nights are a problem for me, but I, I'm perfectly fine doing this in a week or two, or whenever it makes sense. I really wanna understand, I, I don't wanna make another decision on this without more discussions, so.
Thoughtful, so we have a motion from Director Curler to table the motion from Director Buell changing the regular school board meetings to Tuesday at 6:00. Is there a second for the motion to table?
Second.
Director Atkins tables, is there any discussion about the tabling of the motion to change the-
Sure, yeah, so I guess I just would say, I really don't wanna take time, especially having not seen this in writing beforehand at the meeting, to talk about meeting logistics, and we're gonna talk about this at our retreat. So I think it's a great issue to raise, and I have also raised it, and, but we just need to move on and then discuss it and get it settled, but offline, and it doesn't, it doesn't need to be, take up more time.
I don't have any trouble really with tabling it, I just wanna, I'm trying to make a point here in that we, we're supposed to be making decisions in, in open meetings, basically. And those decisions, we're supposed to vote in open meetings, and we're supposed to discuss theoretically in order, we're supposed to have discussion in open meetings. And what's happened is, we moved as a board, now we, 'cause I just got here, but into kind of, things being done in the back room, they're not being done up front. Now, we, we spend, in my opinion, okay, they're not being done up front, they're, they're not votes. Let's take a look at what we just did this evening. We had a discussion-
Director Buell, the conversations should be directly related to the motion that's on the table?
This is directly related to the motion.
Okay.
The, let's look at what we did this evening with the, we agreed on a certain process at the last meeting on how we were going to handle citizen comments. We agreed, we all sat there and said, yeah, it's okay, okay, we're okay, we'll do it like this. We didn't vote, we didn't have a motion, so there's nothing I can refer back to. It's kind of lost out in the ether someplace, but we didn't do what we agreed to, and I remembered what we agreed to, 'cause it was a big deal to me. I was the guy that was saying, we need to ask questions of those people. We need to change the way we deal with the public. And so, the point is this, that yes, we can say, okay, well, let's deal with this some other time or in some manner, fine, if we're gonna deal with it, are we gonna have a motion? Is it gonna be clear? We weren't clear on that. I mean, we, we agreed how to handle that stuff, and it wasn't handled like we agreed. And, and we, we, we are responsible for nine hundred, over $900 billion of taxpayer money. We have 47,000 kids, we've got-
Director Buell, how does this relate to the motion I had?
Relates whether or not we should be tabling it. The, we have several thousand employees, almost a hundred, almost a hundred properties, and, and we're saying, okay, we'll kind of do this in some other way, some way. It's not clear, and it needs to be clear how we're doing it. And that's why I think we should just go ahead and table if you want. I think it's fine to table this now if we really come back and do it. So I'm speaking in favor of tabling it. Then I'll make the next motion, if you'll allow me.
Well, we need to vote on this, and then the actual resolution, and then we can get back to that. Any other discussion about the tabling of the meeting?
Can I just ask a clarifying question? What we're talking about now is tabling it until our next retreat, and we'll have the discussion then.
Right.
Which is a public meeting?
Yep.
Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor of tabling the resolution to change the school board meetings to Tuesdays at 6:00 PM unless changed for reason of conflict by the chairperson, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All those opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Tabling of the resolution to change the meeting dates to Tuesdays, 6:00 PM unless changed for reasons of conflict by the chairperson of the board is passed by a vote of six to zero with student representative voting-
Yes.
Yes, in which case, the vote on the actual resolution will be at another date. Director Buell?
I have another resolution here. I wanna point out that these were sent, not the total wording, but the resolved part was sent to the chairperson through the leadership, so, appreciate you allowing me to give these. Resolution to, resolution to deliver the board book regularly to the PAT president. These are all short resolutions on purpose. Whereas good relations with teachers is a key component in creating a quality school district, and whereas delivery of the board book has been a practice of Portland Public Schools for decades, though not recently. The school board and it, and whereas the school board and its administration is dedicated to working in partnership with teachers, it shall therefore be resolved that appropriate materials in the board book shall be regularly delivered to the PAT president in similar manner as it is delivered to school board members.
Is there a second for the resolution?
I'll second it.
Director Curler, seconds, the resolution that appropriates materials and the, that appropriate materials in the board book shall regularly be delivered to the PAT president in similar manner as it's delivered to school board members. Any board discussion?
Talk to my motion.
Director Buell? Yep.
When I was running for the school board, I talked to tons of teachers, and we're, we're suffering as a school board with those people. We're kind of, our, we don't have a very good reputation. We've done, we've done things that have really irritated and upset it, and I believe we need to begin to move in the direction of saying, okay, look, we are partners to a huge degree with the teachers in this district, and with the teachers' union in this district, they're extremely important. They represent all of our teachers in the whole school system. And so this very, this is, this kind of symbolic gesture, we're saying, hey, yeah, we'll send you the board book, you bet, why would we not? Now, it's not the same as sending it on, we send it to them on the computer, but it's not the same, they don't send it to me on the computer. This is a symbolic gesture, we're saying as a school board, we, we care about the teachers. We respect you, we care about you, we think you're important, we want to include you in decision-making in this school system. Therefore, we're going to include you with this, just like we have for decades, for years and years, even in the 1950s, I think they said this, though I can't really speak to anything before the 70s.
Okay, any discussion?
Could I ask a point of clarification? So the PAT does receive our agenda and the board book electronically?
Correct. And can I just contribute a suggestion, too, that I think if we, if you do go forward doing a resolution of this nature, that we include all of our employee groups, would they, of getting similar treatment as opposed to singling out any, one employee group?
So-
So, but yes, everybody gets it electronically.
I will note that, that Director Buell brought this up as a concern about contract compliance, and so, we were glad he brought it to our attention and contacted, of course, with the president of PAT, Gwen Sullivan, immediately after that, saying we'd be happy to provide her with all the materials prior.
Correct.
She actually responded back, saying it's actually, they can find the link on their own. They thought, they were under the impression that we had additional materials that we had, that they didn't have access to, and so we're in the process of maybe, do we send that immediately after a board? As we all know, sometimes there's information sitting here when we arrive that we didn't have access to before, so-
Or like PowerPoint presentations, that kind of thing?
The PAT president seems okay with getting an electronic link to the materials, and I'd also like to note that we've been trying to work over the past six months to actually figure out how we do send it to board members electronically, and what are the mechanisms so that we can actually save the money and the paper that is a result of that.
I just added really quickly, I'm, I'm opposed to this because, both because it needs to include all the employee groups, and because we have many valuable partners. I mean, it's, to me, if we're doing any kind of courier delivery, it should just be to the board members and electronically, but I agree, if we can move to being all electronically, that would be even better. Save time, money, energy, and all the rest, so I'd be in opposition to this resolution. And I'd like to call the question, now that I've had my say.
With the call to the question, I need a second.
Second.
I'm sorry, a call to the question stops debate on this, or discussion about this resolution and calls it to a vote. There's a second by Director Morton. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes. Oops, sorry.
Yep, that's right.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I've gotten confused.
Okay, so-
Are we voting on calling the question, or are we voting on the resolution?
I'm sorry, so, the call to question, the second stops discussion about the resolution, and then it is a call to vote on the resolution, as is. So all those in favor, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. All those in favor that the resolution that appropriate materials in the board book shall be regularly delivered to the PAT president in similar manners as is delivered to the school board members, please indicate by saying yes. All those opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
Any abstentions? The resolution?
I voted, I voted, would you do that again? I thought she called the question, and you're taking this vote.
I'm taking the vote on the resolution, whether or not the board-
And I'm voting for the, I'm voting for the-
Okay, thank you. So the resolution is not passed by a vote of five to one, with student representative Davidson voting?
No.
No.
So I think, I think the point is, and to Rue's point, absolutely, we should be making available the information, I think electronically is perfectly appropriate. In fact, please make it available to me electronically.
Great, thank you. Director Buell, do you have one more?
Yeah, well, I had one more point on that, and that's the, that I don't agree at all with your, your, what you said about what the Portland Association of Teachers president thinks about this.
Okay. Thank you, discussion about that resolution is over, if you can move on to your next motion?
I tried to make all these short. This is, this is a resolution to cut the grass. Whereas Portland Public Schools should maintain its properties at least to the standards of a decent neighbor, so as to enhance its neighborhood instead of being an eyesore. And whereas Portland Public Schools should be a model of responsibility for the children we teach. And whereas Portland Public Schools acts as a trust for nearly 100 properties, therefore be it resolved that the Portland School Board instructs the superintendent to hire two people whose responsibility shall be to cut the loans on Portland Public School property, not including sports fields, and be it further resolved that the board, that the school board instructs the superintendent to procure the- board instructs the superintendent to procure the necessary equipment to accomplish these tasks. By procure, I don't mean necessarily buy. You look and see what you got first.
So, there's a motion that the Portland School Board instructs the superintendent to hire two people whose responsibility it shall be to cut the lawns on PPS property, not including sports fields, and resolve that the Portland School Board instructs the superintendent to procure the necessary equipment to accomplish these tasks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Director, excuse me, student representative Davidson, you're not allowed to second a motion?
Point of order.
Yes?
It clearly states in our policy that the student representative has all the responsibilities of regular board member except for two. And those two, one is he may not vote, and the second one is he may not enter executive sessions without a majority of the board okaying that. That's it. He can second a motion because he can act in any other way the same as the school board.
My understanding of our policy is that student representatives' actions may not interrupt with the duly elected members of the seven-member school board. Making a motion or seconding a motion is doing such.
It's not stated in the policy. I've read the policy carefully.
I'll second it, and it's a worthy discussion to have because we should be clear on the rights of our student representatives.
I had asked general counsel for the school district prior to this to make sure that we were amply supporting our student, and that is their decision, but now having a motion and a second, the motion that we'll discuss is resolved that the school board, Portland School Board instructs the superintendent to hire two people whose responsibility it shall be to cut the lawns on PPS property, not to include sports fields, and be it further resolved that the school board instructs the superintendent to procure the necessary equipment to accomplish this task. Director Buell, would you like to introduce it or talk about it?
This is, I picked these from the front lawn of Vernon on the way over here. This is what their lawn looks like. It's a little more spread out than this. I kind of bunched them together, but how do you like to live next door to that on a regular basis all year? I just think this is something we need to investigate. Yeah, maybe someplace back in, I don't know when we decided to quit cutting the grass, but it seems to me that we should have, one of the things that we want to do as a school district is to lay a foundation for good education and to lay a foundation for, in this case, at least that our buildings look presentable to the point where if you live next door to one, you're not swearing at them every time you walk out the door to go to work in the morning. And yeah, it's going to cost a couple dollars to do it. If you hire two people, that's two people, but it's the foundation. All over town, we look back, all over town. All over town, people complain. You know, this is ugly school, and how do we expect to have our kids to have pride in the school if every day they walk in and it's ugly? It's ugly from the beginning to end. Now, we go out and cut it over a certain period of time, but we know it's not cut to the point where it looks even halfway decent. You all know that. You visit a school, you drive around. I had that stuff on my, I went to 10 in the spring, I went to 10 schools in North Portland. They all looked bad. The one wasn't too bad, but they looked horrible. And I just kind of got tired of thinking that, is this the best we can do? I don't think it's the best we can do. I think we can do better with this. By the way, at the end, if you'd like to bid on this beautiful bouquet, I'll, starting at $10, we'll send, we'll send the money to the Vernon clothes closet if they have one. If they don't, we'll send it to the Christmas fund. But if you'd like to come up and bid on it, I'd love to have somebody do that.
Any other discussion?
So, I think that we all know that we're not taking care of our, the outside of our buildings the way we would like to, but to me, this is a discussion that takes place during the budget cycle.
Right.
For us to suddenly pull salary and procurement equipment at this point in time doesn't seem like prudent management of our budget, and in fact, it would come out of our reserves. And when I think about all the different things that we might use our reserve for, I'm hesitant to just make a decision on the spot like this. So, I'm in complete agreement, and I think everybody's in agreement that we aren't doing as well as we could in terms of maintaining our property, and we're so grateful to so many community partners who help us and who step up all the time to help us with this. But to me, this is a discussion that should be taking place during the next budget cycle. So, I appreciate it being brought up, but it's not the right time.
Yeah, I would agree with that completely. This needs to go through the superintendent, so staffing and budget issue needs to go through the superintendent and the budget process. Having said that, again, I appreciate you raising it, because we do have Community Care Day coming up, which is one opportunity where folks can come and help make sure that the outside of the buildings look great. And so, that's Saturday, I believe, August 24th.
August 24th.
And I think there's going to be lots of information coming out about that, so I appreciate you raising, because we don't want the outside of our buildings having tall weeds like that. So, I'm hoping folks can come and help us pitch in because it's a huge effort. But I'm in opposition to the resolution.
Director Buell?
Yeah, I have a great deal of respect for Director Regan and what she's done on the school board and her knowledge of things, but this wouldn't have to come out of the reserves. There is other money around. I've in fact talked to financial people in our district that said, yeah, we can find that money. So, there you go.
Any other discussion?
I have a question, which is, and just curious, this is a new guy on the block. What's the responsibility from, in terms of a job description and in terms of, I'm thinking of the principals who are in charge of that building, and it seems like, hey, we ought to, going to make sure the grass gets cut one way or the other. Is that shifted down on them, or is that just taken away more on a centralized?
No, we have, we have centralized grounds maintenance people, but they've been significantly reduced. I mean, you need to get the context of the decades of budget reductions. We've been in really prioritizing teachers in the classroom as being the thing we're trying to protect, and we in fact have two grounds maintenance folks for the entire district. So, as we've said, and everybody agrees, I mean, it's really tough looking at the, at the shape of some of the grounds. However, what I will say is we have had a tremendous set of partners, and Community Care Day has grown significantly from like, this started probably 12, 13 years ago with communities of faith, that have grown to, like on our Community Care Day, we have 7,000 volunteers who come out to get, to get the grounds and buildings ready for our kids, but numbers of those have grown into ongoing partnerships that go on year-round. So, like, some of what does happen is you've got volunteer, volunteers who've become part of, how do we care for and have the grounds on our buildings look welcoming for kids all year-round. Not that we want to be relying on that as the way we get it done. We want to be building this capacity back, but as with many things, we've been relying, we rely on partnerships for numbers of things. We used to have large teams of people that we paid to do those things.
The other part, I guess, I want to say about that, and I think, Director Buell, you've mentioned this as some, as an idea, but we do also have a number of intergovernmental agreements with Portland Parks and Recreation to maintain many of our lawns and facilities.
And, and sports fields.
And sports fields, right, so. Other discussion? Director Curler?
Oh, I mean, I just, I understand budget cuts, and so now we're, I mean, we're in, you know, how do you deal with, this is symbolic, really.
Yeah.
And, but it's important.
Yeah.
So, if I were a principal of a building, I'd want to make sure that that got done, and I would use volunteers, I'd use kids, I'd work with the PTA.
Yep.
I just want to make sure it got done.
Director Vaughn? Yeah. I know we've worked hard over the years to focus on the classroom, and I know that these are, this particular thing is a budget discussion, but I'm not going to allow, I'm not going to agree with those as default positions. I don't think you get to default anything that's, anything else that, I mean, I can sit down and go through our budget and find tons of things, tons of things that we're not prioritizing in the classroom that I think would be better off as a librarian in elementary school or a librarian in the middle school or after-school sports or, or any type of music. I can find you all sorts of money that I think we prioritize wrong. So, I'm just saying, I don't buy a default, we can't cut the grass because we've, in a $466 million budget, because we have to go to the reserves to do it, or we have to go to, or it's not in the classroom. I just, I, it's not a default position, in my opinion.
So, we definitely need to wrap this up. Thanks, thanks. But I just get back, get back to the initial point, maybe, Director Regan, that we, I'm not going to agree to making one-off budget and staffing decisions in this manner.
I don't have a problem with that.
If there's no other discussion, we'll now vote on the resolution that the Portland School Board instructs the superintendent to hire two people whose responsibility it shall be to cut the lawns on PPS property, not including sports field, and further resolve that the school board instructs the superintendent to procure the necessary equipment to accomplish these tax, tasks. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye or yes.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying no.
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 The resolution that the Portland School Board instructs the superintendent to hire these two responsibilities shall be to cut the lawns of PPS property and not including sports field, and be it further resolved that the school board instructs the superintendent to procure the necessary equipment to accomplish these tasks, does not pass by a vote of five to one with student representative Davidson voting?
No.
No.
Thank you. Director Vaughn, allowing this motion?
Yes. The next meeting of the board will be held on Monday, August 19th at 2000, August 19th, 2013 at 5:00 p.m. The regular meeting of the board is now adjourned.